We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I'll move to approve the agenda. Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving into the discussion item, we recently had a legislative change that's occurred whereby the state is mandating that our borders be open. I realize there's a plethora of bill changes that have come through. We are specifically going to be talking about Senate Bill SB 1125, parent choice open enrollment. The reason why I ask for this is to make sure that the board and the administration are all on the same page with proceeding forward. Assistant Arnold?
So, obviously, the biggest change is the school district can no longer declare that our boundaries are closed. So, one of the things that we, Michelle and I, had been talking about was updating our current policy to indicate what we want our grade level capacities to be. And it's by, the way the statute reads, it's by grade level. So, first grade, we're going to allow this many kids. So, we need to figure out what we want our maximum classroom capacity to be and then figure out how many first grade classrooms we're going to have and set that. And then, four times per year, we are required by law, to, this new law, to post what our capacity is at each of those grade levels. So, if we are saying we can have 300 first graders and we currently have 298, then we have to show on our website that we have two open spots for first grade. The language in the law stayed the same with regard to the ability to deny enrollment in our district based on poor attendance, poor discipline, and, there was one other one. It wasn't grades.
Pupils chronically absent commits repeated serious disciplinary infractions, commits disciplinary infractions that result in expulsion or the school in which the student is enrolled exceeds the maximum enrollment of the resident pupils due to growth.
So, it used to say that we could deny based on grades and that is no longer part of the equation. The other part of this is, in addition to saying by grade level what our capacity is, we also can say by program. So, we can ask our federal programs director how many kids we can manage in our special education program as a whole program and what the cap is going to be on that. So, if a student is coming and perhaps there's an open space in second grade, but they have an IEP and we don't have open space in special education, then we can deny the enrollment. So, what we really need to do is determine, which probably in the policy committee, determine what those capacities are going to be by grade level. It does say that we get to, all of our kids who live here get first priority for placement. So, one of the things our admin assistants are asking, because they're already getting inundated, people are calling and saying, "How do I enroll my child? I want them to come to Lakeland." And so, one of the things they're asking is, so this will be a change for us. We're going to allow all returning students to register online this summer, but anybody who's new, whether they've moved into the district or they're requesting open enrollment, will have to register in person so that they can verify the residency and know that, okay, this child is ours and we need to make sure they're placed and these kiddos are not. So, they're over here kind of in this waiting list until we figure out what our actual enrollment is going to be.
So, we usually do registration, like, in August? Is there consideration to move that up? To give us all more time to?
We have been told that we can't because we can't roll Skyward over until after summer school is over because that's technically the end of our school year and that is at the end of July. So, then Chad rolls Skyward over and then, once that happens, parents can then start enrolling their kids in the next grade level. So, what we're doing in lieu of that is we are going to send a Google form home to all of our parents and ask, it's basically a save your spot form. So, tell us that you're going to be here so that we can start planning for how many kids are going to be here. So, we're doing that instead.
Does it give preschools much time for their master schedules either? We're waiting clear till August for registration and to get those numbers.
And at the high school, our kids, they do do a tentative, like, registration, you know, for their classes that they want.
Oh, yeah.
So, they can at least get their master schedule set. And then, the parents just follow up in the fall with their actual registration online. But the elementary level will, well, at all levels, we're going to have all parents vote out and let us know their time on being here.
Well, the class size policy 2240, we did update in June 2021 and we brought the class size standards in alliance with IDAPA.
Did you read through those scores?
Yeah. Kindergarten number of students is 20. Grades one, two, and three is 20. Grades four, five, and six is 26. Junior high is 160. High school is 160. Alternative school grades seven through 12 is 18, average daily class load. We stated in kindergarten and at the elementary level, a class shall be considered overcrowded when it exceeds the following number of students. Kindergarten in grade one, 24. Grades two and three, 24. Grades four through six, 30. We put no overcrowding boundaries within junior high, high school, or the alternative, which we may need to remove junior high and change that to middle school. So, basically, it's 20 to 24 and 26 to 30. So, we gave a four child grade, a four student grade.
So, we really kind of have two standards there.
Well, according to this, we have to decide. If 20 is our number and we have 14 first grade classrooms, times 20, that's 280 kids. We're going to say that's, we're full at 280 kids for first grade. If we're going to say it's 24, then it's 24 times the 14 and then we're full. So, I think we have to decide on one instead of a range. I think we need to have one number.
Right.
Because for us, like, if it's over, that's when the teacher starts getting a stipend for having more kids in their classroom than what other people have. If we say that we're full at, my understanding from reading this today and listening today is if we say we're full at 240, but we actually have 250 because those kids actually live here, our class size, we're going to be actually over. But we can be over. Just means we're not taking anybody else. So, we just have to figure out what we want to live with, I guess, as far as 10. There you go. We're going to have 10 kids in the classroom. So, if we stuck with the merit numbers, which is the first number, set of numbers that you have, it keeps our numbers lower with regard to allowing outside kids to come in. But it doesn't preclude us from adding kids who move into our district into our classrooms.
Well, it seems to me, for purposes of this issue, we would use the lower standard.
That's what we consider a full classroom. Anything over that, we're literally saying it's an overfilled classroom.
Right, and we're paying stipends to teachers.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're having to, yeah.
So, based on that, our policy doesn't need to change. Our policy was updated in '21. Or we could review it and sign off on it that, you know, for 2023, we still agree with these numbers.
The only question I would have is, someone on the outside looked at that policy and saw two different standards. We chose the lesser, but they, our policy says we're not really overcrowded until we reach the other standard. That, to me, creates an awkward situation. Otherwise, I'd want to consider just using the old standard.
The other part of that is it has to be by grade levels. So, at the, like, at the middle school, we have to say, instead of 160 per teacher, which is kind of how our policy is reading as far as their case load goes, we have to say, we're going to, this many sixth graders, this many seventh graders, this many eighth graders. So, we just, that part will have to be.
All the way up through.
All the way to 12th grade. So, that part will have to be tweaked a little bit. And I don't know if we just look at what our current enrollment is and at those grade levels, rolling them up to the next grade and then kind of sticking with what we've got.
How many sections, let's say, of seventh graders are there in each of those schools? Six or seven sections?
Of how many? Of which grade?
Seventh graders, for example.
Well, so, we have, at Lakeland Middle School, you've got two ELA teachers for seventh grade. They each teach five periods, so 10 periods, 10 sections of ELA for seventh grade.
10 sections. Timberlake would be?
They have one teacher, so there would be five of them. And it may not be quite 10 because the ELA teachers might.
They need sections total if you use 30 as a standard.
Right, then you're 450. I can tell you what our enrollment is right now at the middle school seventh grade, just so you know. So, we currently have 326 seventh graders. We have 352 eighth graders. But this year, we have 348 sixth graders. So, we rolled them up to seventh grade.
Okay, well, if you just do the basic math for high school, they're averaging 40. No, that's wrong.
Right now, we have?
Yeah, it would be 40.
Right now, we have 418 ninth graders, 406 10th graders, 381 11th graders, and 373 12th graders.
And I think we have kind of a
If you take, for example, English one, which would be ninth grade, and there are probably six sections of that at each high school.
No, I don't, for that part, I don't know.
Would be more at?
Lakeland High School.
But total, there are?
Well, you've got?
10, 10 sections.
Yeah, we've got 418 freshmen between the three high schools.
What I'm thinking is that, you know, that's a pretty concrete unit of measure because every student takes English one, for example. And so, however, total number of sections you have, we establish the number standard. See where that fits with the actual number.
Can we write the policy that way? So, instead of having a, we actually have to have a number.
I think we have to work through it in order to establish a policy.
But if we know what the number is, why would we not just use the number?
You want to redo it every year?
We might have to. And we can update, that can be an annually updated policy where we look at where we are.
That's a different approach than what we're using.
Or we, at least to start, we base it on what we know we already have.
What would you say, 415?
418 for freshmen. So, that'll be our sophomore class next year. We have 352 eighth graders.
252?
352.
352, so there's a quite disparate difference there, disparate.
Yeah. Yeah, we have 373 seniors graduating and 352 incoming freshmen. And I just shared this sheet with all of you.
What happens if you use 26 all the way up through?
Well, we could. We just, I'd have to just find out from, from the principals, how many sections of English one and then multiply it times the number.
You're still not, oh, sorry, we're not sharing.
415 divided by 26, what's that?
15.96, so 16 sections.
16 sections.
That's probably about right because we have, you know, we've got sections at Mountain View. Probably a section of sophomore or freshman.
I could certainly live with 26 all the way up through. I mean, a lot of times when you're doing averages, you use 25 for a classroom. If you get up to 30, you figure you're beginning to get pretty crowded.
Right, especially when you're talking math.
Well, you know, in science, you don't want 30 kids in a science class.
No.
Bring labs and things like that.
So, we would base our calculation on 26 kids times the number of sections of ELA because each year, everybody has to take that class.
Every year, yeah.
Right. I mean, that's, it seems to me like a good place to start. I mean, take a hard look at it, see how that all shakes out.
The numbers might change year to year depending on how many sections of the ELA law.
Right, depending on the number of sections. And you adjust that according to the enrollment of the student coming in at the next grade level. So, we got automatic, the base should understand that point.
I think it's a good consistent way to calculate what that number should be.
There's a shot?
Yep.
Rather than just grabbing a number out of the air as you get to, makes sense.
It was Lynn's.
So, I can ask the three high school principals, how many sections of ELA, oh, actually, and the two middle school principals, how many sections of the ELA they're going to run next year for each of their grade levels? The sixth grade numbers, we can calculate like we do the elementary because they're running, they're not running a typical, they don't, they're not part of the typical middle school schedule. They're kind of a block. Yeah.
Well, I already said that we're using 26 for the sixth grade.
Yeah, so I think we have six, five, six grade teachers at Timberlake Middle School. And I think we've got eight at Lakeland Middle School. Eight at Lakeland Middle.
So, how many are we considering?
338, and we have six grade, we have 348.
So, what is what that, we're anticipating in class size for grade seven, eight?
We're going to say that it's going to be 26 per number of sections of ELA. So, I just have, I have to find that out from our secondary administrators. So, if we've got nine sections.
What about high school?
Same. It'll be 26 kids per section of ELA. So, once I know how many sections, we can multiply that by 26 and we'll get the, those grade level numbers.
How does the alternative school stand?
It doesn't, we don't, it doesn't ask us to separate out the enrollment for alternative school. It just, at lea, and if it doesn't, I missed it. I can look, where's that? Can I look at, do you have the?
Images?
Thank you. It gives you the kind of equation as far as, like, I think it was 18 kids on a case rule on? But I didn't see.
It's okay. I just took a copy.
Yeah, it just, it says you can have capacity limits on programs, such as special education, gifted and talented, et cetera. I don't think the alternative school is a program. I think it's, but I can.
No worries.
We have, the post legislative roadshow is on April 20th, so we're going to get more information on this so I can get some clarity around the alternative school if we just say, like, they're counted in the overall number of kids, so. I would just say we have one section of ELA at Mountain View. Or maybe, maybe a three quarters of, or two thirds of a section because they only have to have 18 kids in it as opposed to the 26 that we're going to put in the other classrooms. So, I wouldn't count it as a full section, I guess, just to make sure our numbers stay where they need to be.
That way, we're not boosting our numbers.
Right, when we're not going to put 26.
Artificially, yeah, based on the alternative school. I mean, the point of having an alternative school is that those classrooms are smaller and they can.
Now, you mentioned something about federal programs.
Yeah, we can cap the program, so.
Do you have a method for that?
I'm going to, I need to sit down with Kelsey and just see what we currently have. And I will tell you, we are over 10% of our student population, so we're full. Because we're not supposed to be over and we are.
Well, maybe that's our standard.
10%? Maybe 90?
Yeah, just to give us room for kids that are, or, yeah, our own kids. Kids that actually truly do move into the district.
Well, and the other thing that I want to really be careful about with regard to special education is that what I don't want to have happen and what we've been able to do prior to this rewrite is when they're coming with high, high needs, if it was going to require that we had to add a parapro to be a one-on-one because we didn't have that, we could say no, that we didn't, because our taxpayers are not required to pay additionally to take care of somebody else's kids. That's gone from here. So, I just want to make sure that we're careful about special education, that we're not bringing kids in. It would cost us a lot of money.
So, with respect to the alternative school, then we determine if the numbers?
In my calculation, when I, when I get the number of sections of ELA from our secondary administrators, instead of counting Mountain View's as a full section, I'm going to count it as a .67, which is, that's about.
Two thirds of a.
Yeah.
So, we're going to?
It's .69, so it's close. So, if Lakeland High School had nine sections of freshmen English and Timberlake had six, that'd be 15 and then I would count Mountain View as a .67 and then I would multiply that by 26.
Think of the high school grade level numbers. I do. Okay, so do we think that we're all on board with the direction that we're headed for open enrollment?
Yeah.
Open enrollment, all right.
The other, and this goes into effect in July, but just sorts on our radar and I do believe it's in our open enrollment policy, but there is a date in the statute that says that people can start enrolling, or, enrolling for the following year on February 1st, which they can do now. And it actually, in the law says, people, that's not the only time they can do it, they can do it whenever. I'm not, so I'm not really sure why the February 1st is in there. But it does say that then the school, the, the parents have to note, the parents of the student who, so a post-vol student who wants to come to Lakeland, post-vol's parent has to notify post-vol school district that they're acting, or they're requesting enrollment in Lakeland. And that school district then has 10 days to send to us the attendance records and the discipline records. And we have, I think it said 60 days to look at those and make a determination. So, there is some time built into the law so that we can make sure that we're being thorough before we just let somebody in.
What's your, what's your take on the tuition limits? It's sort of all about. I read that I came away a little confused.
Well, I, I think I need some clarity on it. What I have, what we've been told in the past is that, I think that tuition was really, there was a lot of conversation about tuition from, like, Washington paying tuition to come here. What we've been told by the State Department is that for Idaho students, it's illegal for a school district to collect tuition and the ADA for the student. So, you have to pick one. That's what we've been told in the past. So, what I need is some clarity on, does that change this or not? Because we've always said that we're not going to do tuition, we're going to do the ADA because you get more money from ADA than you do tuition. So, I, that's a question mark for me at this point.
The reason I ask that part again, I mean, here's a lie. It's part of interpretation was you're charged tuition because you don't have any tax support.
Right, if that's indeed what they're doing, that's a statutory change.
Yeah, but it's worth the pass. Because when you take a non-resident student,
And they're benefiting from the higher taxes our patrons are paying than what they pay in post-vol and court land if they're coming here.
So, is? So, if there is no further discussion, I can go ahead and end this meeting.